I'd like to call to the Lemmister Planning Board for June 5th, 2017.
Okay.
First, an open public meeting for 290 and 298 Central Street for site plan approval. Lab representative?
Yes, sir. Uh, supporter of this petition is a candidate in the area of F.A.P. Auto for the construction of a new 4,500 square foot auto repair facility off the drive off of Central Street. Uh, we're proposing to construct the, uh, having a parking area to the north of the proposed building where a main point of entrance would lead to the building. Um, so currently the site is, um, previously developed. There are two existing structures. One at this point has been removed because of its unsafe state of destruction right now. So that's been removed. Uh, there is an existing single-family home restored on site currently. Uh, it's intended that that will be also removed to make way for this proposed instruction. Um, as I said earlier, we'll have a post parking area to the north of the building, um, with a secondary exit point onto Central Street in front of the building. Utilities are handled on-site. Uh, we'll have a new drainage system, uh, to capture the stormwater and treat it prior to discharge. Uh, the site actually experienced a net decrease in impervious area, so, um, that aids in the stormwater management side of everything and actually causes a net decrease in future stormwater from the site. Um, we're proposing to install a drainage sewer line with a NBC trap to capture any water runoff from the vehicles as an entrance to the building. Um, and eventually that will connect into the existing infrastructure within, uh, Central Street. Um, we're proposing having snow storage along the outer limits of the parking area, um, along with five deciduous trees per the zoning ordinance, uh, for the landscaping purposes. Um, as part of the general site, it would be mostly grass and, um, everywhere, with the exception of the paved areas. Uh, we are proposing having a gravel, brick wrap footprint along the limits of the wall and buildings to allow access to the rear and, um, perform any maintenance to the drainage structures that are needed. Um, as part of this project, we have gone before the CBA and the Conservation Commission and received their approvals for this project so far. Um, if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay. Uh, is there going to be a fair amount of fill on that site?
Uh, a little bit. Um, as you stand on the street, it's going to be pretty flat coming up to here. Uh, we are constructing a retaining wall, uh, to both limit the impact onto the wetlands and the impact onto the floodplain, uh, which we're also looking for you for a special permit for that, too. Um, so, yes, there will be a fair amount of fill associated with this.
So we get about six feet, six to eight feet?
Yeah, the wall sits at around 67, 25, and the base grade around is about 360, so you're looking at a six, six and a half tall wall around there.
Okay.
Hey, John, do you want to open the second one?
Um, yeah, I can. I'll open the second part of public hearing for 290, 298 Central Street for special permit approval for work in the floodplain.
Um, as I stated previously, uh, there is a, uh, area near and floodplain associated with it. Um, the floodplain kind of reaches up and through the site. Due to the issue of having to replicate and, um, provide compensation to the floodplain, uh, we're proposing to construct a retaining wall that'll both limit its impact and to, as I said earlier, to help improve the, uh, wetland resource areas around the site. Um, we are proposing several replication areas, uh, one being removal of the garage, uh, general site, our braiding cleanup along the edge of the property, um, lowering some portions of it in order to add that compensation to it, and additional, uh, compensation area towards the south of the property.
Okay, so pretty much that area down there is going to be decreased and brought to that height?
Yes.
Because as you go in there now, there's a, like a, a steep dragway.
Yeah.
Okay.
But can you, did you mention what is proposed to occupy that spot? Do you know what's going in there?
It's a auto repair facility.
Okay, I'll open it up. The audience? Do I have any, uh, comment from anyone in the audience concerning either work on the floodplain or on the site itself?
Well, there were some department head comments.
Yeah, well, let's get through this. Do I have anyone else that need one that might want to speak on this subject? Let's ask one more time. Is anyone with, was just about, okay? Sal?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just looking at along the department head comments, especially on the conservation side. So you're going to build the wall prior to developing the site?
Uh, it's going to happen in tandem.
Yeah.
Um, we'll do the removal of the existing structure out back, uh, remove the existing pavement throughout the site, uh, do our plantings, uh, proposing creating a wild seed mix over there to help restore that riverfront area, so once we get that complete, and then we'll start to construct the building and the wall in tandem. Uh, the wall in the back, or the foundation for the building is actually going to be a little bit deeper than usual, just to help us, uh, limit that impact. So, um, then it'll be constructed and then everything else will be built up from there.
And you had approval from Conical, right?
Yes, sir.
Especially with the stages you just proposed?
Yes.
And what were their conditions that they had?
Uh, there was a few small conditions.
Uh, so?
There was a sidewalk with the, uh, wetland scientists just confirming, uh, the wetland diminution, uh, that was, uh, completed a few days after approval. Um, it's just general, keep the conservation aware of everything that's going on.
Okay. And they have approved where you, you have your hay bales, uh, because I forget, okay.
Do you have lighting showing up there?
The lighting from the entire site will be off of the, uh, building itself, um, since it's a kind of a, you know, magpie kind of operation, um, having additional light throughout the site is not necessary.
So no lights on the park lot?
Nope, all lights will be off of the building.
Okay.
That portion of Central Street is pretty well lit anyways, so adding additional lighting would be probably too much.
Well, let's see.
You're looking, you're requesting a waiver for a landscape plan?
Yep. Um, from a formal landscape plan, and Lou will put the five deciduous trees around the parking area to provide landscapes for Lou around the parking area.
Through the care of my main building, any, any?
Sure.
The landscape, the waiver we're asking is asking for a landscape architect to be, to do the landscape plan. We actually are providing landscaping on the project.
That's right, being prepared by a landscape architect.
Correct, so, yeah, we are providing the landscape information on the plan.
Yeah, I see trees on there, and I was just, okay, you're the architect now?
No, that's what we're asking Lou to leave.
Yeah, they're asking for some stuff to be shown on the plan to, uh, the parking spaces that be aisle with light.
Uh, the parking spaces and everything are general 19, or nine by 18, uh, parking spaces, 24 drive aisles, um, upon approval, we can always, um, add the dimensioning onto the plan prior to construction.
Yeah, that's what DPO is looking for. Dumpster location, snow storage.
Snow storage will be along the outer limits of the parking area, and there is actually dumpster located near the, uh, along the wall.
Where is it?
Uh, if you were to look at the building, uh, there's the wall that comes out front of it, it's located right there right above the dumpster.
Is it marked right now?
I don't see it marked.
Well, that's what they're saying. They want, they want to see these things marked as part of the plan. So dumpster location, mark that, uh, the snow storage and, uh, the aisle with it, uh, this is to be indicated on the plan.
Okay. Okay, we got that covered.
Normal stuff.
Yep. Okay. Do I have any other questions or comments? Okay, motion would be in order.
I move to close the, um, public hearing for the site plan of 290, 298 Central Street.
A public meeting? Is that a public meeting or?
It's a public meeting.
It's a public, it's a site plan approval, it's a public information meeting, so the public meeting.
Public meeting.
Okay.
I have motion by Carol to close the public meeting for 290, 298. Second, Paul, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries.
I move to close the public hearing for the special permit for approval of work in a floodplain for the same location.
Motion made and seconded by Carol and Paul. Any discussion here and then call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries.
Thank you. How's your picture, man?
Oh, wow, I was laughing.
Okay, 6:40, okay, well, it's scheduled.
How is the area?
That's. Public hearing for city council petition, 6717. Elizabeth Reece, amend the Lemmister zoning ordinance by adding article, uh, what's that?
19.
19.
59?
It's 19.
19?
It's 19.
Entitled recreational marijuana facilities to allow. It's 18. Marijuana facilities, amended City Planning Board recommendations. Do I have anyone in the audience who wants just to speak on this?
I would.
Yes, ma'am, just please identify yourself.
I am Elizabeth Reece, um, and I live on 58122.
Okay.
Um, I brought up this petition, uh, because I feel that we should start planning now. Um, I think good taking the time and your planning in place will help protect cities and towns, sir. Um, whether, whether you're for it or not, uh, it will help. And also, there's, there's no harm in, so I, I looked at this like, what's the harm in planning? If we have the zoning in place and let's say the state doesn't, I don't know, they, they turn it around, they turn around the decision, um, then we have the zoning, but we're not going to do anything. But if the state continues, we'll have the zoning ready for next year, um, July 2018. So for me, I like to plan ahead and do my due diligence ahead of time. So I think we should take this year that we have and get Lemmister ready.
Okay.
Uh, we, I think this has happened before with the medical and, um, we're kind of repeating history a little bit again, but, um, so I think it's a good idea to start now, um, and the residents would both be favored in Lemmister and in the cities.
Okay. Got you, okay. Thank you. No, I did send, listen, I meant just whatever you had to say.
Thank you.
So I have, thank you. Uh, do you have anyone else who wants to speak? Okay. I have a, a letter that was given to me, uh, to cry for the meeting from, uh, Councilor Claire Frida. She asked me to read it. Uh, Chairman John Souza, member of the planning board. Due to my prior commitment, I'm unable to attend the planning board meeting, hearing tonight regarding, oh, this on the, oh, well, the both, moratorium for city council on Lemmister and/or recreational marijuana. I think this goes, this will go for both this and, uh, the moratorium one that's going to come up, uh, after. As most of you know, I am director of the past and past president Massachusetts Municipal Association, an organization advocated 351 cities and towns. Our board is tracking down meeting and council actions across the state. The date there were 82 approved moratoriums and 24 outright bans in 137 communities in the process of doing something to protect their cities and towns. It's important to note that people have spoken and the legislation of the recreational use of marijuana has been settled. It is also clear that the new law has several significant drafting flaws that require fixing in order to prevent negative outcomes as well as clarification to ensure that the stated intentions of the law are met. As stated in a MMA letter to the special community, committee, special committee dated March 20th, 19, uh, it should be 2017, and chaired by Representative Mark Huzek and Senator Patrick Jellin, Massachusetts became one of just eight states that have legalized the recreation use of marijuana. Because of our population and our prime location in the center of a compact geographical region, our statement soon become a commercial marijuana industry's east coast base. The growing industry will certainly use Massachusetts as the retail platform for Rhode Island, Connecticut, New York, Vermont, and New Hampshire. I will add that Lemmister's proximity to New Hampshire should also be cause of concern. The new law prevents cities and towns from making local decisions on whether to allow commercial retail sales in their municipalities. Colorado law allows local governing bodies to ban retail sales in their communities, and 70% of the cities and towns have enacted such a ban. The Massachusetts Marijuana Act only allows enacting a ban if the question is placed on the ballot and voters approve the question at their next state or local election. This has led to considerable confusion among cities and towns and the legal council and could lead to costly litigation. After quoting from the MMA research, home cultivation of marijuana is now allowed with authorizes the civilian of up to six plants per person and 12 per household at any one time. Calculating the street value of approximately $60,000 worth of marijuana and based on reasonable processing estimates, the 12 plants could yield 12,000 joints of serving marijuana-infused edibles. Many local and state law enforcement officials are gravely concerned regarding the homegrown use. The sheer volume would clearly incentivize a burgeoning black market that will hit the street at least a year before official regulated commercial sales become lawful, creating a source of sales that could easily reach school-aged children and teenagers. We should know if the special committee will reduce the number of plants allowed in the homegrown provision, if there will be something in place to, to register, regulate, and monitor this activity to safeguard public safety and health and to protect neighborhoods, residents, and youth. Taxation is another issue that needs to be resolved as well. We need to know that we can generate enough revenue to cover potential police activity that will be needed. In some way, we have responsibility as a city to implement the new law in a manner that protects the public interest. Once the legislature has completed their work and provides a direction for cities and towns, the city council and the planning board can begin the process of legislation in our community. There should be input from the citizens and open discussion as to the effect of the new law will have on Lemmister. There are federal regulations that also need to be considered as they conflict with the new law. This cannot be just about money. Quality of life and what we must in our community to, to beat is, is important, and we should improve and should impose a moratorium to protect the city until the state finished their work. Thank you for your consideration. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Cliff Frida, counselor at large. So this is the letter that she sent us, and it covers both what we have in front of us now and which we will be looking at, um, in the future.
You want to open up both of them, yes?
Okay, I'll open it up, well, let us open, anybody else in the audience?
We can open a moratorium, too.
No, I got to deal with that differently. Yeah, there's a separate petition.
Okay.
I can't open those at the same time. So, anyway, do I have any questions or comments from board members? Okay. Uh, I'm just going to say is that, um, just to let people know what the process is and seeing as, uh, I was very much involved, uh, and with Ms. Kelly, uh, on putting the medical marijuana petition together. We not only had a considerable outline from the state before we started, we also had several other towns and cities and towns that we could look at what they had done and what they enacted, so we could follow, pick and choose. And even with that, uh, we'd spent months, I'll say, uh, putting this together, uh, when we finally get it, there were still a few things that had to be changed, uh, when it went through, uh, our legal resource, because things had changed again in the state. Uh, because they, once they found that they had been enacted, uh, for medical marijuana, in the actuality of the operation in a number of towns, they found that new issues had, had come up, uh, which, which, which were not anticipated originally. So then the state came back and changed their regulations again. So we were sort of in a catch-up mode. I foresee that is happening again. And right now, we're waiting for the state, uh, just to let people know where it stands. It's been voted, and it's up to the governor, and as far as I know, he has not formed the committee, um, that is to come up with the regulations for the state. So once they form, that committee is formed, then they will come up with regulation state. If there are any changes against it, then that has to go to the regulation, goes into the legislative session, and then the, they would have to act on it, and then at that time, the city can, uh, to go forward. So just letting you know where, where we stand at this moment, uh, not pro or con, just, this is the process, and that's where we stand at this time. Okay? Do we have any, anything else anybody wants to say? Open it one more time. Do I have anything else from the audience and from the board? Okay. A motion would be in order then.
Motion to close the hearing.
Uh, motion by Sal, seconded by Fred.
Yep.
At the close of the hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Okay. Motion carries. Uh, 650. Public hearing for draft ordinance, second reading ordinance, amend chapter 22 of the revised ordinance zoning by inserting a new section, article to section 22-16, point 12, entitled recreational marijuana establishment moratorium. Uh, planning board recommendation. Okay, well, I don't have to do that. So this is the second one, is that's an actual, is a moratorium that has been authored by Councilor Frida. And what this does is, it just says, okay, we're not going to, we're just going to tread what? We're going to hold still at this time, we're not going to take any action, uh, we're just going to hold off, and really, that's, that's what the state is telling us to do. We're going to for it or against it. Let's get all the facts before we go forward. And that's primarily what, you know, her letter covered both of them, so that's why I read that first time. So that's where I stand, that's where it is on that. Again, on the moratorium part, do I have anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on that? Yes, ma'am?
KLC Mona, 25 globally closed. I just have two questions.
Yes.
What if there, what are, for the cities and towns that don't enact a moratorium, what sort of legal position does that put them in? What I'm trying to figure out is what's the purpose of having a moratorium if the state is just going to let everybody wait until they finalize their regulations?
It, what it, I'm really not sure, you know, what the legality is there. As far as I can see, what the moratorium does, it, it puts it into the hands of the, uh, the city council. They say, okay, we have a moratorium. Until the city council votes to lift the moratorium, there is a moratorium. Eventually, it only can table it for a period of time, and I'm not, it might be a year. I, I, I don't know what that period of time is. It's basically tabling any action, and then they have to act on it one way or the other. So that just forestalls, and it says that the planning board, who authors a lot of these things, uh, we authored the, the solar one, and we authored, you know, the medical marijuana, it pretty much says to us, okay, don't do anything until you have all the facts. So I look at it as, as communications also to the planning board, say, just hold steady. We're, we're sitting here, we're waiting, we're basically tabling this until a further time, but there is no, and through our state laws will determine, or our ordinances will determine what that time is, I don't know what it is. It just means there's no action taken. But really, it's almost a perforce, because we don't have the information to go forward anyway. And it's sort of a second step to just sort of enforce that.
And so just what I understand, this is only applies to a moratorium on retail, sale by retail establishments?
That is correct.
Not by personal use or personal information?
It has no effect on personal use, it has no effect on medical marijuana, that, that stuff is all in place.
So those other concerns about public safety or things like that, those issues can still be addressed and discussed and policies come up with?
That is correct. Okay. It's only the recreational sales of marijuana. And what happens is on the other stuff, like, like she mentioned in the letter, the homegrown stuff, that's still going to, you know, that issue is there, it's been voted and it's been passed, and, and people still, uh, can grow plants and like, it says 12 plants, I didn't know it was 12. So I learned something myself today, uh, that they can grow 12 plants at 12,000 joints, so, and that's, that's a business.
I, I would just say, it might put Lemmister behind the, the gun a little bit, because somebody is going to have to take the initiative to come in and request that the moratorium get lifted, and there'll be a procedural gap with that, you know, once the state finalizes.
No, not necessarily, uh, we're not, we're not in competition.
But I mean, let's say the state comes out with their regulations.
Right.
And, you know, they want to keep the moratorium in place until, whatever, until it expires by law.
Yeah, it can't be that.
I, I, you know, that wouldn't be right.
I don't know, I'm going to ask Carol, maybe she knows better than I do.
But I think the purpose of the moratorium, if I understand the question right, is that it, say, the, the state does whatever it's going to do in the meantime, I think it gives us, and assuming that the moratorium is still in effect for the city of Lemmister, then it gives us time to kind, to, to propose the zoning ordinance that we're going to propose while, if, if the state has made its, has taken its action, whatever it's going to take. Say, say they'd say, okay, as of July 1, this is what's going to happen, and we have a moratorium, then we can, then we can make a plan with what our zoning is going to be in the meantime.
That's my question. So right now, there is no zoning for recreational marijuana, right?
Yeah, that is correct.
And that's what the prior committee was really suggesting that we do.
Correct.
So if the state comes out tomorrow and says, okay, it's, it's full steam, and there's still nothing we can do, because there's no regulations upon which to grant a permit.
That is correct.
And so, what are you going to need a moratorium for if there's nothing upon which?
Well, but that's not, but, but think about the solar pit. Well, but that's not, but think about the solar panels. They can still, we have no ordinance on solar panels and they can, and they, we've been grappling with that and they, we have like, they just put in a whole, they, we just approved of one without any ordinance. So if we have, it's sort of like the adult entertainment, if we didn't have an adult entertainment zoning ordinance, they're gonna, they'd be putting one up at 298 Central Street if they wanted to, if it's zoned commercial. So I think, and so I think that's, that's the reason for the moratorium. And even though the state has its own, you know.
Schedule.
Schedule that they have, that I think that's the reason we should have one because then if they, if they say as of July 1, this is what municipalities can do and we don't have a moratorium, then we're back in the same position we were in.
Wouldn't that be the same rationale for the prior petition, to start the planning of the zoning?
Well, you know, the way I see it, I don't necessarily think we're in disagreement with, with Ms. Ritchie's. I think it's, I think we're saying the same thing, just in different ways.
It's a time, I think what she's proposing to do is to go forward, us to write a.
But that doesn't mean we can't with a moratorium in effect.
But we don't know what to write.
Well, yes, but we, but we have to have a moratorium in effect so that someone doesn't come in with a site plan saying, I'm putting in a 10,000 square foot building with 10 parking spaces.
And they can't.
I think you could cross out the word medical.
They can put in a building, but just leave it as marijuana.
And be good, to be honest with you.
Stores are gonna have to have licensure for all of this. They're not gonna get it until the state has a vehicle to get it.
So another question, if I could, separate from that. Surrounding towns, including Pittsburgh, I'm almost certain, do not have a moratorium and are planning to move ahead as soon as possible. So I'll go back to Gail's question, does that put us in some type of competitive disadvantage if we're waiting months while our neighbors are moving forward?
I don't think so, I think some of the towns have already outright banned it. Like Sterling and, and I, I'm not sure, nobody said Bedford, no.
Not Pittsburgh.
Not Pittsburgh.
Some of the, as towns are looking at it as.
Does, I think that's one of the unintended consequences of having a moratorium is that it would definitely impact at least the size or scale of the operation that would come to Lemonster.
I just don't see the purpose of putting it in the closet and forgetting that it exists.
Well, no, that's, I don't think it's, and the other way, look at it the other way, it's not gonna put us there either, you know, because it's, there are enough people that are interested in it that there's, it's not gonna happen, you know, it's not gonna die in the vine. It's not, it's not gonna get shelved and not gonna come back, it ain't gonna happen, okay?
But it could cause the city business to other towns that are ready to move quicker.
But probably in the morning on a time, when our recommendations go.
I check, we'll see how that.
Yes.
I would just request that the board is gonna entertain doing the moratorium, that it's clear that the moratorium is on somebody coming in and making an application and it's not a moratorium on drafting regulations and having meetings and it doesn't mean everything comes to a halt because I think that's a little confusing. And I think the other thing would be is if there is going to be a moratorium, that there is a time limit on that, so if the city, so if the state issues its regulations on July 1, then Lemonster must lift its moratorium within three months or something like that, which, you know.
Sunset.
We could, we could, we're looking, we're making a recommendation to the city council, so there could be a recommendation that, that a time be set on the moratorium. Yeah?
Well, actually.
Well, yeah, legally, there's, they can keep it going for so long, can't they? I mean, there's a, there's a set number of days.
Yes, there is a set time, they can.
Says March 15, 2018.
It says through July 1st, 2018.
Looking at the last paragraph, temporary moratorium today.
July 20, yeah, July 1, 2018.
Right.
Yeah.
Or, or until such time as the city adopts zoning ordinance amendments that regulate recreational marijuana.
John, can I ask Carolyn a question, do you?
Yeah, go ahead.
The definition section of the proposed ordinance?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know where that came from.
And wouldn't that apply to the medical marijuana facilities that already are approved and will be operating in the city?
Yeah, that's why when I read that, it seemed like, shall we, marijuana cultivator, testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer, that's why I don't know where they got that from.
Other type of licensed marijuana, like business we have license.
I think, Paul brings up a good point because I read that and I, I was like wondering where they, where they got it from and it doesn't even use the term recreation within the, I think they need to define recreation. I don't know, so if we can, if we make the recommendations of the city council, I just ask that they consider the definition.
Under this definition, everything that has to do with marijuana is regulated.
Yeah, I know, I'm wondering if they pulled that from.
I'm checking.
I also agree with Mike that we've laid a foundation with the medical marijuana regulations that clearly we're not in the same position that we were before that was moved into law, as we are now.
For registered marijuana dispensaries considerably longer.
Contain a lot of the same pieces?
No, an establishment operated by a nonprofit entity improperly registered with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health that acquires, cultivates, possesses, processes, including development of related products such as edible marijuana, et cetera, transfers, transports, sells, distributes, or administers marijuana, products containing marijuana, related supplies or educational materials to registered qualifying patients or their personal caregivers.
I, you know, I'm reading, see here, it says the moratorium is until, through July 1, 2018, or until such a time as the city adopts zoning ordinance amendments that regulate recreational marijuana establishments. There's no timeline there and it says whichever occurs earlier, which I would just wish it was spelled out, how much time.
Well, if, I mean.
What it's saying is as long as we want, it's July 1, 2018. Is when the law goes into effect, that's correct. But this is staying after.
But if this is, if this is voted on and accepted by the city council, I don't see it happening before July 1, 2018.
No.
I don't even know what the, how do you even, how does it get onto the agenda to be voted on by the city council if it's on the moratorium in the first place?
Someone would have to petition.
See, anybody on the prevailing side on Robert's rules, it goes to the city council and the city council votes for, for the moratorium. In that period of time, any councillor on the prevailing side, either pro or con, can call for that to be brought back on the table. Okay? And then they, either side, they could bring it up for a vote and then it would be, the moratorium would be lifted. Okay, and then action, so that can, you know, so things would be done. I don't really think it, it just says they just don't wanna deal with it over there in the city council until we get the facts. It doesn't say that the planning board can, we couldn't start looking at it, but really, until we get some input from the state, I just don't know, I, I don't know what the.
Well, July 1, it's over.
Yeah, July 1, 18, so it happens, but like say if the state comes in and says, if I put in a requirement on, let's say for distance from a school, if the state says 1,000 feet and our ordinance says 500, it's no good.
Right.
Okay? Yeah, you know, you would have to go back and to amend the ordinance, you have to go through the whole process of hearings and all the rest of it and vice versa, you go, okay. So there are like hours of operation, you say, we could say, yeah, we want to open it till 10 o'clock at night. Well, if the state says it's only 9, I don't know, okay? So there are, there are, those are very simple, simplified questions and there are a bunch of others. But, so we have to know what the city, what the state is gonna give us. One of the things that we got tripped up on, not tripped up on, but we had to change, was on the security. And it was a simple thing as how close can you put the bushes?
Yeah.
The bushes close to the building, okay? We didn't have that, but then the state says they can't be close to the building so that you could have security cameras could see close to the building, okay? So there are, sometimes stuff, you know, stuff like that comes up that we just never think of.
Sure.
Okay, so, so that's why, just to be on the safe side, let's not spin our wheels. You can't do, not gonna do anything before the 18th anyway. And just keep it clean until July of next year, just keep it clean.
And this ends on July 1, 2018.
So, I mean, it's.
That's the way you read it?
I don't, yeah, but I don't really understand that it's doing, it just doesn't make any difference.
I just don't see how it's any different than not having a moratorium. I feel like that just says that we're just ignoring the voters for another 12, 15 months to do what we could, the same exact situation we find ourselves in.
Well.
But if we don't have a moratorium, there's.
Well, you can't buy it, you can grow it, you can't buy it.
Exactly, so I don't understand why having a moratorium does any more for the people who don't want it to kind of move forward than.
It seems, it seems to be that in the council, there's an interest that a moratorium does something for them.
Is that, that's the majority opinion on that?
Well, I don't know, yes.
Can I just?
Sure, but the hearing is still open.
So that's, that is our, the people that signed petition concern is what, what is the underlying theme of this moratorium and what's it gonna do? And that was a question, can you start planning even though there's a moratorium in place or are you gonna have to wait?
Oh, no.
And, and as far as you don't know what the state's gonna do, I think you have a guideline for, with medical, it's probably, I think.
85%, yeah.
Yeah, 95%. It's in the mirror. And you have other states that are doing great, the sky didn't fall. I went to Colorado, I went into one of the shops because I wanted to see what it was all about. The security is great, you can't even get into the store unless, if you show them an ID. So they won't even let you into the actual retail space. I mean, there's, there's all sorts of things that, this, this wouldn't be a new thing. You know, I could see it was brand new and I would obviously be nervous about it myself, but I think there's already precedent.
See, that one thing that you mentioned just now, as far as I know, is like security to get into the building. That wasn't in, you know, that's a Colorado law, okay? That's not in our, what you voted for, okay? So is that, that the thing that was put in for that security reason that Colorado, I wasn't, we just mentioned that, okay? That Colorado came up with and said, okay, you have to have, you know, security at the door.
Right. Chances are they're going to look at.
Oh, yeah, and I'm just, and that's, but until he gets.
But we went out and visited, we had committees from our legislature go out to visit all the states where it was legalized.
Yep.
And see what their procedures were, see what their tax situations were.
Right, like even in teaching, you don't rewrite a whole lesson plan if there's one already there for you.
Yeah. So I feel like, I agree with you, what we, a lot of the stuff that we've written for medical marijuana.
Right.
It's gonna, but I, I think this, with medical marijuana, we said, hey, we're gonna, that's in an industrial zone and if you wanna go get it, you're gonna go into an industrial zone to get it. I think the push, and I'm just saying, when I think of the things, I usually get myself in trouble. Is, is.
It's still time.
Just things we.
Yeah, medical, the commercial, or the commercial marijuana, recreational, it is more regulated to a commercial area, okay? I'm gonna say to a smaller, small store in a, in a, in a commercial area rather than tucked away
Yes, that would be ideal.
in, in an industrial spot. But I don't know if, I don't know what the legislature is gonna do on that, so I can't, I can't go either way.
But again, we, we do already know to a certain extent. It's not gonna pop, there's not gonna be a store in the mall for a day, that's never gonna happen. Um, you know, within a school, probably not. You know, there's certain places that these companies or businesses are going to be looking at and they're not going to be detrimental to anyone else. Also, I am concerned that if, from what I understand from the moratorium, if, if nothing is spoken about or considered, that we will be behind. And I don't see a reason why we couldn't have a very conservative zoning ordinance put in place and then tweak it as needed. Actually, that's happened in several cities in Colorado. They, they quit in ordinances and then nobody opened up shop and then they said, oh, well, we have to loosen up our, our ordinances. I just, I would like to be ready.
Yeah, well, really, it doesn't, like I said, we're the, realistically, if somebody said to me tomorrow, okay, we're ready to roll, you know, put something together with, like you said, once we have the state regulations, we look at the medical marijuana and what theirs and what their recommendations are and we probably could put a new, new one together on a week or so. Okay, I mean, it's not that, I don't see whether it'd be that, you know, we're, we're, a lot of the stuff is already in the medical marijuana. I mean, do we make those facilities of medical marijuana also recreational and not do anything and that's it? And they, we kill two birds with one stone, I don't know.
I'm just, I am seeing, Pittsburgh is definitely, they are going for it, they're going with the gusto and.
Yeah, well, are we in competition? I mean, is, are we talking about the dollars? Are we looking for money?
Yes.
Okay, well, you know, I mean, I, I don't wanna make money as my, my ulterior motive. I wanna get it right, okay? And whether the business is to bring people in and sell it and to, and to get a tax revenue, we don't even know the tax revenue, that has to be enacted on by the, by the city council also. And that, and the, and I think it's now, I'm going for, I think it's 2.5% that the city or town can put on their own income. So, you know, yeah, there is some, there are some income ramifications, is that enough? You know, can the police department come back and say, gee, I'm gonna see all kinds of problems and we're gonna have these issues, I want 10%? I don't know what that number is.
Usually.
Stop talking, we're just speculating.
Usually crime rates go down, they're not worried about this anymore. Prices go down.
I'm not gonna, yes.
Dealers, I'm just saying, like.
Yeah, that's, that's the legalization part of it, okay? I'm not into the argument.
No, I understand.
We're just, you know, okay, that's, that's done fact. We're just saying, do we have a moratorium? Do we wanna go forward with the moratorium or do we wanna just, we're gonna have to sit, you know, and what does that buy us? And I think that's the question.
I'd just like to suggest, I'm not sure whether this will pass or not.
Go ahead.
It looks like it's gonna be a relatively divided vote. Either way, I think there's agreement that one message we should send to the council is that whether there is a moratorium or not, that we should begin planning and do all the groundwork necessary to be ready when the time comes, moratorium or no more.
I don't think there's any issue about that.
But in taking a vote yes or no, we won't get that, so I'm just suggesting we include that as our main message.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Going forward, whatever, whether or so yes or no or not, we should include that.
Yeah, we can, as our recommendation, we can put any, any recommendation, yeah, right, moratorium, but we wanna make sure that, that it's forward and that people stay on top of it and.
And that we be in the planning process.
Right, and we continue with the planning process, that can be done too.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else that was just speaking for or against the subject? Here none, I think a motion is in order.
I think motion, I'll close it.
Did we, did we close the 6:40?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did.
I just remember.
Yep.
I have a motion made.
Second.
And seconded, any further discussion? Here none, I call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say no, motion carries. Seven o'clock, continued public hearing for West Village Lane for preliminary subdivision approval.
This is my cue to get up and start talking about Mary Avenue, right?
Mary Avenue.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, we.
Like I did last time.
Because we passed.
Uh, no, they're separate, they're separate, yeah, they're separate subdivision.
West Village Lane.
Yeah. By the way, Mark got a nasty tick bite.
I heard, I spoke with him, yeah, he got tested, so hopefully everything is okay. So we had the hearing almost a month ago now and the planning board decided to go for a sidewalk and I know John showed up and Chris showed up and we had a nice walk. And at that meeting, we looked at a couple, many, many things on the property, but the two most important things were the wetlands that we looked at. There was a wetland system way in the back. Um, there was a wetland system way in the back and there was a wetland system everybody testified to in the front, not on the GIS. We looked at that as well. My recommendation to the planning board at this point, since that's a hot topic for some of butters and for a couple of planning board members, is to table the preliminary subdivision plan, let's do the right thing and, and file an RDOA, a request for determination of applicability with the conservation commission and have the wetland issue decided by them. When it's decided, I come back to you and have a discussion. I think that's the best way to go for this subdivision.
Okay.
Let's do the right thing.
I agree, because it, it does, it was questionable, you know?
Can I just, um, as far as schedule, we have a forty-five day time limit, um, where the board is to take action on the preliminary. So, I just wanna keep that in mind for.
Well.
If he's, if he's asking for the continuance, so we'll tell it.
He's asking for the continuance.
I'd be happy to. Uh, put it in writing, ask for the continuance until the comm, comm issues a decision. That decision is issued, we come back to you and have a further discussion about the preliminary subdivision plan.
Yeah.
Not a problem at all.
Do you set a time limit on that or do you have, or you have a date?
We're gonna be, yeah, so we're gonna file the RDOA, uh, in the month of June, uh, two thousand seventeen and we'll go normal course. I suspect it'll be on the July meeting and hopefully they make a decision. If they don't, maybe August.
So, can we, would, would, do you want us to schedule it then? To schedule our, to continue ours? We have to.
Sure.
So, in September?
Uh, first meeting in September.
Sure.
Um, I'm gonna say that the first meeting would be Labor Day, so it would be.
Yeah, and then he'll have to give us a letter to request that date.
So.
It won't be the first one, it'll be the, it'll be the third.
We can just continue it to the.
So, the, yeah, the, the third, the second meeting.
Yep.
So.
And we won't have a meeting the first week of September.
Right, the first is the fourth, so, um, the third Monday in September is the eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Make a motion to continue the hearing until September eighteenth at six thirty PM.
Uh, with the, a letter from the petitioner.
To be supplied, yeah, to the, to the planning director.
I have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Here or none, a call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries. Okay, uh, Mary Avenue.
Um, so the board voted at that saving, we had a site walk at Mary Avenue as well, we had that site walk, uh, Mr. Sueser attended. The big issue, the big issue with the Mary Avenue subdivision is, as I remember, the DPW comment about the sewer. Um, we proposed exactly what the DPW has approved in the past. Grinder pumps, one-inch lines, all the way to a, a manhole. Tying to the manhole, from that manhole, it flows gravity into the existing sewer line. Because of that, there's so many one-inch lines in Mary Avenue and Bella Villa that they don't want that. They wanted a pump station. So, at the meeting, we talked about, uh, let's have a meeting with the Department of Public Works and I had that meeting. I basically had a meeting with Mark Pennerini and John Roseberry and basically said, listen, you guys don't want a pump station for three lots, do you? You really wanna take that over? I knew they didn't, alright? So, there's a solution to this and it's allowing an E-one pump. An E-one pump will require one force main, just like a pump station. And that one force main will, will, uh, connect to that manhole in Bella Villa. One is better than three lines. They agreed. They also said they would send an email to you, uh, outlining exactly what, what their decision was. I don't know if they received one.
Uh, they may have, I can't remember right now.
Okay, so, they didn't, they, the reason I say that is because I asked on the call, I need to see one.
I know we've talked about the E-one line, I just would have to find, uh, the actual email outlining the details, yeah.
Yep. Yep. So, they agreed to the E-one, we're fine with the E-one, that's the outstanding issue for the subdivision.
Do you have an updated plan that shows that?
No, 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 I was waiting for the recommendation and I didn't see it, so. But we're fine with the condition that we, we put an E-one pump. The other alternative is, there's a cross-country line that goes to the rear of our property. We determined it's off our property, so we need easement from another landowner, we can pursue that as well. And, uh, the landowner also owns the existing home on Main Street, uh, one, one five seven Main. We could probably go through that as well. So, there's, there's alternatives with the E-one, whether we tie in Bella Villa, Main Street, or to the rear of the property. That was the outstanding issue that I'm aware of.
So, that, did we have another issue? Was that the one we had issue with the, oh, no, that was on West Street, with the entrance road?
Correct, correct.
Okay, I don't wanna confuse them.
No, no. Mary Avenue subdivision, proposing three, three new lots.
Right.
And the three new lots, um, off of a cul-de-sac, all conform to the, the mentioned requirements. If you remember, if you go down from Main Street onto Bella Villa, if you take a left, that property did the same thing that we're proposing to. Ended with a cul-de-sac, it's still private. I, I, I imagine this is also gonna be a private road as well if it's built.
Well, it shouldn't be a private, no, see, that, we're gonna get into that discussion, I wanna get into that.
Yep.
You're looking for a private road, we're not looking for private roads.
We're not looking for a private road, but I, I don't know the history. If you go down Bella Villa and take a left on Mary.
On the Mary, right.
I'm told that's still private, I don't know why, so.
I, is it, I.
It should not be.
Yeah, but do I remember correctly and thinking that there was a lot of stuff left to be done?
Oh, is that the issue?
Yeah.
Out of time that the developer didn't do, didn't finish it to bring it up to, uh, standard.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, I don't wanna see this thing adding to that.
I don't, I don't want it, we're not proposing a private road, we're getting it wrong.
No, no, no. In fact, there, there is a bond, or there was a bond.
Were we taking it over at some point? I remember correctly?
I think we took it over.
Yep.
Okay, so, in that case, uh, if we took over the bond, um, then it would be a, a city, a city road.
Yep.
Okay, and accepted.
Yep.
So, um.
Once you do the work.
I, I, once the work was done and I'm gonna ask Kristen to, just for.
Yeah, cuz I remember.
To follow up on that, because I, I, I remember the action that we had gone back to the developer several times. Uh, we still held the bond. Didn't have the capability or the capacity to make the corrections that we're looking for. So, we enacted the bond for the city to do the work. And there was enough money to, to do that at the time. It was, uh.
Doesn't matter.
Three years ago, four years, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Around that timeframe sometime. And now, whether that, did that get done is the first question. And did we follow through ourselves with the DPW going to the city council to get the road accepted?
Yep.
Because that would be the next step, that's all part of that step. So, in that case, that would be, uh, incumbent on the DPW to make that request to the city council. Okay? So, yeah, glad you brought that up, we can follow up on that.
Yep, yep. We were fine with all the comments from all the city departments, there are no issues whatsoever. Uh, the last issue was we did walk the wetland line, it was all flagged, delineated, showing the plans, there's, didn't seem to be an issue with that. But I'll let John Sueser speak to that for the board, uh, plenty of room back there.
It, it seemed like it was decent. I think the biggest thing that I was concerned with, that I wanted to get spelled out is, uh, you know, was going to the E-one pump or the difference. And, and to get that letter from the, uh, DPW that we were going to E-one system. And that the drawings be changed to, to be shown that. And it seems like there's still some questions, um, which way you're gonna go with that.
We, we, we had, when we had the meeting, we talked about going directly into, uh, Mary Avenue, Bella Villa. What we did years ago, there were three lots, if you go down, if you go down Penny Lane, right?
Right.
And there's three lots that were developed on the left-hand side.
Uh huh.
We actually designed an E-one pump for each of those lots. So, there's one force main for those three lots coming up Penny into Mary into Bella Villa. We plan on tying into that line.
Oh, so there's already an E-one pump for those three?
Yeah.
Oh, so you can tie into that main?
Yes. That's what we talked about.
Okay. Oh, that would work then. Okay.
Genevieve, what's the status of, um, with the conservation commission? They, Mark got a lot of comments about flagging in the stormwater basin.
Yep. Yep, so, uh, preliminary subdivision plan is just that, preliminary, we don't do any design work. And we are proposing intention based, it has to be fully designed, it has to meet the stormwater management policy of DEP as well and the conservation commission rules and regs and yours. So, we plan on designing it, to that standard, not a problem. The wetlands are delineated, when we have our design plan, we'll file a notice of intent with the conservation commission and go through their process.
Yeah. So, I think we got the basis in place, it's a preliminary.
Yep.
So, we can go forward and he's got the direction to, which way to go. Do you have any other questions? Now, I'll ask anyone in the audience, it's interesting.
So, Justin Butterfly. Justin Butterfly, you're right. My name is Alan Lovelli, I'm one of the, uh, the butters on the corner.
Yes.
You're gonna tie in the E-one line as it just crosses Penny Lane, so you won't be digging up, um, most of Mary and Bella Villa?
So, there's a, there's an E-one line in Penny Lane that comes into Mary and into Bella Villa. We'll be tying into that at the intersection of Penny and Mary Ave.
Okay.
Yep.
Much better, cuz there's like eight lines there, so.
Yeah, and that was everybody's concern.
Yep.
And we didn't like, you know, having the grinder pumps and three more lines on that road wasn't what I wanted either. So, and, and the DPW had been shying away from E-one for some reason. And, uh, I don't know. And so now, this seems like a, okay, and, and it's a preliminary plan.
Yeah.
Just to let you know, sir, that what we're doing here is, they get a preliminary plan, now they have to come back with a detailed plan. Detailed plan gives you all your grades, your location, your homes, your actual depths, where all the drainage is gonna go. Uh, stormwater, it has to be done. Um, so there's a whole bunch of other issues, they have to go back to conservation. So, uh, it's, this is strictly a preliminary approval. It's to get input from the people so that you don't, you know where the, the pitfalls are before you get started, you might say, put it that way.
Okay.
Okay? Do you have any other questions?
Nope, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, sounds good. Do I have a motion?
Motion close the hearing.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Uh, any discussion? Here or none, a call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
John, can we have a couple of minutes before we start the regular meeting?
Yeah, well, we're gonna take a break anyway, is the attorney.
Do you want to do the call for?
Well, I have to do that anyway. Okay. That's okay.
Thank you. Thanks for your attention.
You do the close order? Because we have to open up the regular meeting and then go into executive session.
How about you?
Um, Patrick Perla.
Here.
Fred Frederick.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
Salvador De Coni.
Here.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Kevin Toriose.
Here.
Thomas Carrigan. Michael Mahan.
Here.
Is he?
I don't see her.
You don't see her?
No, we actually estimated about seven thirty, so this worked out pretty good, but she might be on her.
Then why don't we just.
Okay, then we're gonna go forward.
Yeah.
Uh, folks, I'm just gonna let you know what's, what's happening here on the agenda. We have some litigation, uh, that, that has come up. So, uh, when our attorney gets here to discuss that with us, uh, we're gonna have to go into executive session. At that point, everyone, uh, will have to leave the room. Um, and, uh, we're going to, uh, our executive session. At, at, at the end of the session, I don't know how long it's gonna take, uh, we will reopen the door and we'll re-adjourn. Okay, to, to finish the, the rest of the business on the agenda. So, um, we're gonna go forward, we're scheduled, the adjutor is gonna be here at seven thirty. Oh, is this her?
Oh, um, King, okay, yeah.
Okay, so she, yeah. So, at this time, I, I need a motion, a roll call, uh, to go into executive session. Let's follow along.
Make a motion.
Need a motion, a motion is in order to go into exec, Fred's making the motion. Seconded by Mike. Okay, now roll call.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Fred Frederick.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Salvador De Coni.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yes.
Kevin Toriose.
Yes.
Um, Thomas Carrigan. Michael Mahan.
Yes.
Okay. I'll ask you folks to please, please, thank you.
Yay!
Yep, I am, um, an email asking to please withdraw the plans tonight, they will prepare revised plans for our next meeting to be placed at that time.
Okay?
Okay.
Preliminary subdivision for four-two-zero Grant Street.
Um, we're gonna place that on the Ju- July meeting, okay? So, we won't have a meeting the Fourth of July.
Right.
And so the next meeting would be, uh, July seventeenth.
I will not be here, just to let you know.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
It's a preliminary. It's, okay, motion B for July seventeenth at six thirty. I have a motion made.
Make a motion.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Here or none, a call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I was trying to do, doing some sites and I just noticed one thing and I'm not sure where we stand on this. On that new, that subdivision, uh, Amy, Amy Lane, the, the.
Ava.
Ava. I thought all the new streets were supposed to be named after veterans.
Yeah.
Now, why is that not named after a veteran?
It fell through the.
Well, that's, it, there's nobody living there. Okay?
Yeah, we can.
And, uh, that is an ordinance.
Yep. It's on the, um, registered plan, recorded plan.
That's right.
Has that, so they would, there would need to be.
That's right, but the ordinance says that, that we should have picked up on that, but that Ava is not a, a name that's allowed, which has to be a veteran's name.
Well, unless it is, they just have to tell us.
Unless it's a veteran, but then there's a sign that is put up, that it says a veteran and when he served. Okay? Just like on Gamache and we've had on, on several others. Okay? So, it has the veteran's name and when he, that person, that he, that person said, could be he or she. Okay?
Yeah.
I just saw that and it reminded me when I was going through it, so, you know? Just because somebody overlooks it doesn't make it right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, uh, Brooks Pond, A and R. Who's, who's here?
All right, keeping in mind, it's an A and R, okay? Don't turn it into.
He can't talk.
Don't turn it into a site plan.
Okay, while you're passing it out, basically, uh, the lot, um, on the side, where we had buildings, then we added, uh, buildings, uh, under the, just, um, site review.
Yep.
There's a building here and a building here.
Right.
And we're dividing it basically for financing purposes, they, they publicly approved right away, approved, um, subdivision road. Adjudged frontage, adequate frontage, adequate area for both.
Was this all one lot before?
It was all one lot before.
So, you're making it into two?
Into two for the purposes of financing, correct. Into two for the purposes of financing, correct.
Can you say that again?
These three. This was all one lot, we're just dividing it into two. The reason why, the odd configuration, this goes down, this goes down the driveway and then goes down the second driveway. Okay? And there'll be rights to pass and repass, we'll reach a room for the purposes of access, but it's mainly for the financing for the banks. Because one bank can't do both buildings because of the cost of it.
I make a motion to endorse.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made and seconded. Do I have any discussion? Hearing on the call for vote, all in favor to endorse, say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries.
Good job.
In full court.
I'm gonna make this next one quicker.
North Street and Industrial Road, A and R. Live my color, man.
Thank you.
On this one here, we had these two house lots right here on North Street, like that.
Yeah.
These two right here. Okay, these two right here. The city is doing roadway improvements on North Street as part of the US Highway work. And what they've done is they've taken an easement over this entire lot. Over this entire, what was this entire lot. And in order to basically save the ability to build on the land, we're basically making, this lot is gonna be built up on in this area here. So this lot will still be built, this, we basically just made this lot bigger. This was a bunch of extra land. Okay, so we basically.
Okay, now the. Where's your road now?
Frontage.
This is.
North Street.
This industrial, and where are your buildings?
Hold on, this is North Street.
Yeah.
Frontage right here and here.
Uh huh.
Building right here and right here.
Okay.
And this is Industrial Road, which is also a public way.
Right.
And these are gonna be three lots with frontage on Industrial Road, building, building, building. And these are the, these are. These are the Residents B zone.
Residents B.
Okay?
Yeah, limiting, okay.
Yep, so that's Atlantic Avenue, which has the right-of-way established back when Liberty Place was built. There was a right-of-way established down Atlantic Avenue for the purposes of accessing both parcels on the. This was known as Lot 1 before.
So it's access Lot 1 and access Lot 2, which is the Liberty Place Apartments. Okay, so Liberty Place is over here.
It's way up further, yes.
Oh, it's up here.
Yeah, this is all, this is all part of the land, but the, this with turnaround is.
Okay.
And then goes up to the apartment buildings and then through the other side is where the gate is.
Right, oh, okay, the gates were over here.
Gates on the other side.
Okay, I didn't realize Industrial Road contained.
Yeah.
That's not there, though.
Correct, it's public, but it's not, it's not constructed.
It's not constructed.
Correct.
Okay.
So we still have a public way, we have access from the, from the existing way, which is known as Atlantic Avenue.
So.
That's where I was confused.
All right.
I couldn't picture this being built.
Is this all, this is all one lot currently?
No.
I'm just trying to visualize.
These are two lots.
Yes.
And this is a piece of land that was remaining, as one big piece remaining.
Oh, okay.
So what we did was since they put the drainage in here. Okay, we had house plans for here and here.
Okay.
And so they came in, they took this. Okay, so they took the easement, not the land.
Okay, yeah.
Right, so we still have land to build on, so they're gonna build a house here instead of over here. And since they're gonna build this house here, we're gonna pull this house down and put this here and here.
Okay, so you're looking.
And you're gonna open up this road here?
This is existing.
That's an existing road.
Your A and R is for five lots.
Correct.
And the access, the frontage, the 3A is.
North Street.
2A is.
North Street.
Through the easement.
4, 5, and 6 is through Industrial Road. Is the, is the frontage.
All right, but Industrial, the Industrial Road is not improved, that section.
It's not even, that's right.
It's public.
Public way.
It is a public way. So you have frontage on a public way which meets that requirement, and we're gonna provide the access over the existing way.
It's an accepted road with trees on it.
Right, over the existing way, which is Atlantic Avenue. This existing way.
Where, yeah, where is it on the, on the aerial?
See this, right here?
Yes.
See this right here?
Yes.
And that's this right here.
This is the layout right here.
Okay, and these are the apartments of Liberty Place, okay? This is behind that, this is just the layout of Industrial Road. Industrial is already paved up this lot here.
This is right here.
Okay.
Okay?
And his proposed, and your lots on the aerial are right here?
Right here, these three lots right here, and then these two lots are now being converted into, after they're being, no, they're remaining as two lots.
But this one becomes just an easement.
We're just reconfiguring the two, these two lots into.
So you're reconfiguring 3A and 2A, correct?
We're reconfiguring 2 and 3 into 2A and 3A.
3A.
That's one part of it.
Yep.
And then we're creating 4, 5, and 6.
Gotcha, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I mean.
Oh, with the picture, it makes it, you know? Hold a lot there, so many people come into my.
Yeah, see, so this was just this.
All right.
This was just this before, and now it becomes all of this.
Right, this was like back.
And the frontage still being on North Street.
Correct.
Phil, do you intend for those three lots here to be house lots at that point?
So they're gonna have to.
No, we have access, we have access over this way, this way was created when Liberty Place was created.
But this can't be built.
The way gives the city your rights to use.
Now, what's this land in here?
It's old field.
I know.
It's old park.
Oh.
But you can't see them here, but they, they're not on the Industrial Road.
This is an old picture.
I don't think so, no.
No, 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 believe me.
Pretty close, yeah.
They want it to be, I wouldn't want it. It's a long way away from North Street for frontage.
It is.
Yeah.
On A and Rs, it's simply adequate frontage on a public way, not adequate frontage on a public way in which the public has the right of access?
The public does have the right of access on that.
What?
The public does have the right of access on that.
But the trees are in the way, and the frontage is in the way.
I mean, there have been cases where.
No, that's over here. We're talking about that, we're talking about this one.
Well, you know what, it's not, it's not pretty, but I'll make a motion to endorse.
Re-sake it free.
I have a motion to endorse. Is there any, do I have a second? Second?
Please, so.
Any discussion? Hearing on the call for vote, all in favor endorsement, say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries. I'm gonna say that.
The exceptional thing, but I do. Good job.
Just a good one.
Let's go on.
Hey, so I have to ask one item mention. Sunday, they're gonna wanna connect Industrial Road to North Street. I won't be alive, but I've created the provision to be able to do it in case. I always thought it was gonna be the extension straight through, so I preserved the piece of land. But they took the retention on for the city. So now it has to go up the access road.
Hello.
Good luck selling, good luck selling three lots with their front yard being a parking lot.
They're gonna be beautiful.
They're gonna be beautiful. Okay.
Easily have denied that, but.
190 Avenue, Fisk Lloyd Avenue, A and R.
Um, I did not expect this.
Oh, I talked to, I talked to Tom briefly about it. He, I can, but I can explain, I can explain it, and if you're gonna feel more comfortable. Oh, you can, well, I talked to Tom, well, do you wanna, are you gonna, are you gonna present it?
I certainly can't be.
Yes, let, let the.
He, he paid for it, and it's sort of the chicken egg thing, he can't.
Right.
He can't.
Can't record it, can't record.
He can't, the deed can't be transferred to, until this is done, but he's paid substantial amount of money for it. So a little piece of.
There were some encroachments, and when the cemetery was being improved.
Right.
The encroachments were discovered, and then an agreement was made between the church and Imperial, Tommy Carrigan. And we did this conceptual plan where deeds were drafted, signed, and held. And then Mr. Carrigan had X amount of years to pay for it, he paid for it in full. Now we need the A and R endorsement to actually transfer the parcels. And there's appropriate notes on the plan with respect to each parcel, where it's going. Each parcel is noted, really, and not a buildable lot. It's actually being conveyed to an annex with a bounty property to form one single lot, that's all it is.
So. A. These are three separate lots.
Correct.
You're making, you're dividing, this is an A and R for three separate lots, you're not consolidating it as one, they're one now, and you're dividing it up into three.
Purposes of recording, so.
Exactly.
So A goes to.
A goes to.
The church.
Yep, so Apostle A is not a buildable lot, is.
No, it's going to Imperial.
By the Roman Catholic Bishop of Wister to Imperial.
Okay.
Right, yep.
And then C.
C note 6.
By virtue of revision of Imperial, may be able to claim the fee interest in Parcel C, which is a portion, is discontinued at the end. It's all, because his fence is like.
Yeah.
All the way over, the fence is on the plan.
Oh, fence is over here.
Yeah, fence is over here.
Oh, well, way over here.
Well, it's a paper street.
Basically, Parcel A is going to Imperial across. Parcel B and C as well, but with paper streets, you have every version rights, right? If it's an unimproved road, the ownership goes to the middle. And then the Roman Catholic Church is going to do is sign off on their rights for Parcel B. Tommy already has rights in Parcel C, so A, B, and C go to Tommy, that's what it's like.
Okay, I got it now, because his fence is here, but because if this weren't a paper street, legally, the, by probably adverse possession, because it's been there since the, whenever. He would own all this, but because it's a paper street.
Yep.
He, they have to give up there, I get you, I get you now.
Yep.
Yeah.
By virtue, okay, because that's the reason for it.
Now, there's nothing, there's nothing to be said about, in the future, somebody wants to improve Florence Street, they may have rights to approve over this property, but I doubt very much if that's gonna.
Right, and that's what Tom, Tom was telling me today. And he, he told me he's paid, he's paid for Parcel A.
Yes.
But in order to, to close on it, this has to be approved first.
Now, would he have to take the next step to abandon that?
You don't have to abandon it, it's not improved.
Okay.
So when it's not improved and it's a paper street, ownership goes to the middle. So the Roman Catholic Church goes to this line. Tommy goes to this line. Church is basically signing off on their rights to Parcel B.
Right.
So Tommy gets A and B and already has C.
Yeah.
Do we have, do you have any documentation of the church signing that over or something?
They will, once this is recorded to register.
Once this is recorded.
Did they sign a purchase and sale agreement?
They have an agreement already in place.
You do have that?
They, it was handled by Peter Campbell, I saw.
Okay, so why don't we?
Make it a condition, we're gonna corrupt your purchases.
If we could.
What's the issue?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's fine, how about if, how about if we, I'll make a motion to endorse. And then just call, I don't think we can condition an A and R, so I think, why don't you just?
No.
Can, just talk to Peter tomorrow to have him show you the purchase and sale agreement, she's just wants to make sure that.
My concern is you're basically splitting a piece of land that those people aren't here right now, like, how do we know that they're authorizing this?
Yep.
And I talked, I did talk to Peter about this briefly, if we could get some sort of like a letter or something from them saying that this is the, what's happening here.
Just though, even, even the purchase and sale agreement is.
That's.
Uh.
But that's fine, like, A, it's Tom.
It's probably I'm worried about.
Well, I can.
He told me how much he paid for it, I don't think he's making up that number.
I can tell you that the agreement was signed, I can tell you that Tommy did pay the Roman Catholic Church, that was at the initial meeting.
Yeah, but that was his pennants, we didn't pay for them.
So I make a motion. Triple. I make a motion to endorse.
I have a motion made and seconded to endorse.
Hold it.
Do I have further discussion? Hearing on the call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no. Motion carries.
I'll follow up on that letter.
West Phillips Lane for preliminary, that has been. Taped.
Continued.
Oh, continued. Okay. Very annual extension for preliminary subdivision approval.
That one's continued as well.
We closed it.
No, closed.
No, it was quality.
We just closed it.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's the one where.
With the eject.
That you're gonna go over the E1 system. And so that's gonna come up with the plans. Of course, conservation's still gonna do some of their things, and, well, they've done already, okay? So I think.
I just have a question, when I went up there, it was raining, so I couldn't get.
Yeah.
How, is there a big drop from the road into the back of that land?
There is a dip, yep, all the way back, in fact, the plan has departmental, so you can see the change in operation.
Okay. I'm just curious.
That's where they need the pump.
Yeah. Okay.
So, but we were gonna check on, on the Mary Ave bond and if the DPW had done their due diligence.
Yeah.
Because I think we grabbed the bond, you know, really.
I'll check, I'll find the project file and see what happened with that.
Yeah, but that's a separate from.
No, no, understood, but weren't we gonna.
We'll have a discussion for whenever they come back.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. And the other, well, do I have a motion, gentlemen? To accept, most want to be in order to accept a preliminary subdivision.
So moved.
For the E1 system.
An E1 system and anything else?
Well, that's just preliminary, so we don't have to.
Yeah, yeah, so moved.
A motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing on the call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no, motion carries. 290, 298 Central Street, the site plan approval.
I didn't have any other.
I make.
I think, no, there were a number of conditions with the.
With the cost of.
With the Department heads.
Yeah.
Okay, with the snow storage and the, it wasn't on the drawing.
Yeah, there were numbers.
It's only about dumpster, but it is on the drawing.
It's on that.
But they're gonna be marked, I don't know who was marked dumpster, you know, the location was it.
Snow storage, all trenches within Central Street are required to be backfilled with flowable fill. And aisle width and apartment space sizes need to be indicated on the site.
I make a motion to approve with those conditions.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve with the Department conditions. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing on the call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no, motion carries. That was site. For work in the flood plain, special permit approval for work in the flood plain.
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a special permit with any conditions from the Department heads.
Sure.
And conservation, well. Specifically conservation. Okay? Any further discussion, hearing on the call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close say no, motion carries. City Council petition on 6717, Elizabeth 3C, amend the limits of zoning odds by adding article, whatever it's, uh.
19.
19, entitled recreational marijuana. It's not gonna work on my Roman numerals. Been a long time.
First grade.
Recreational marijuana to allow, the regular recreational marijuana facility for the city.
They go under all the way to 100.
Okay?
I, I make a motion to defer. This petition until, well, that's, while I make that motion to defer this petition. Well, this is why I think we should do 6.4 first.
So let's do that.
So let's do that.
I make a motion to move to 6.4.
There you go. I can't, I've already opened to point three.
So let's table six point three.
Okay, table six point three.
Until after six point.
Okay, I have a motion to table six point three, and motion, you have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion to table, carries.
Six point two.
Okay, six point four. Okay, draft ordinance, the second reading ordinance, amend chapter twenty-two to revise ordinance entitled zoning by inserting a new section, article to section twenty-two dash sixteen dash twelve, entitled Recreation Marijuana, Establishing Moratorium after the Plan Board Recommendation.
Someone still needs to explain to me why we need this moratorium when there is already a moratorium put in by the state. I think this is completely.
Well, there isn't, there isn't a moratorium by the state, it's just an action by the state.
No, that's all specific data. They gave us specific data.
Yeah, you can't do anything until.
So I, I agree with Mike, I just wanna reiterate my, my point that however we vote on this, it should include a comment stating that whatever the council decides, work should continue in drafting ordinances in preparation for the eventuality, whether this passes or not. I agree with Mike, I tend to vote no, 'cause there's been no reason presented why we need a moratorium.
And, you know.
And the definition makes no sense.
I don't think that.
Well, the definition definitely.
It certainly is not a comment on whether we want medical, I mean, uh, recreational marijuana or not. It's just a matter of, we, I don't think we need this extra regulation.
I also don't think it reflects in any way that, uh, the, the care and due diligence that's going to be put into making sure that these things are in the appropriate places in town.
Good.
Already said with the caveat that we, you know, stop looking at this.
See, my, my issue is I don't, I don't know enough about it to, to vote no on it, I'd rather be safe, because I, my, the point is, I think we should have our own moratorium so that there's some, I'm pick, trying to think of the right word, overlap, I suppose, or if, if, whatever's the action the state is taking or not taking, and then if we don't have a moratorium in place, then we don't have anything, at least we have that extension to be able to put a full ordinance into place.
It, it allows.
So why do you make it conditional on the timeframe and conditional on, uh, I, you know, on an application?
Well, I think we should just make it conditional upon that, like Paul said, that we, that we still engage in a discussion about drafting an ordinance, even when the moratorium's in place.
I'm just guessing about.
I mean, that, that, that's a.
Or the.
What is the, what is the concern?
What do we need?
I mean, there's probably a hundred, literally a hundred.
But see, I don't know what's, I'll be honest with you, I'm ignorant with what's going on with the, what the state is doing, I don't know, I haven't read anything about it.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah.
What's happened, a lot of, Mike, this is not unusual, there are a lot of cities and towns in the state that have put in moratoriums, and it basically, it's just like, let's hold things off, let's be cautious.
That'll be three years now since being.
You know, to be, to be cautious, and, and, and we have, we know that the thing's gonna happen, let's just, you know, just, it's just sort of an extra level of, of caution, and that's, I, that's how I think.
I mean, what is the difference between some, an establishment, an establishment selling alcohol and an establishment selling marijuana?
But I'm not opposed, I'm not bothered, but I'm not opposed, well, I am opposed to it, but that's not beside the point, I, I mean, the, the law has passed,
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, that's not the discussion.
Matt, I'm just asking, why?
Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have, but we.
But we need to stay.
But we need.
It's the procedure, that's, we're dealing, we're not dealing with marijuana, we're dealing with the procedure.
Yeah.
Okay, and for some reason, and I, I, I admit, I'm not totally, you know, adverse to all of it, but that, a lot of, we're not alone, there's a, a number of cities and towns that have put in a, a moratorium. There are other towns that have already voted outright no, okay?
I mean, I, and I hear you, and I'm, I did not vote in favor of recreational marijuana. I, no, there, you know, I, I don't like the idea of it, but. It's exactly, like, I had my say on that, we all had our say on that, and I know it's not necessarily about that, but really, it's time to break down the roadblocks to letting this happen.
All right, can we?
The more of the first.
Can we just vote on it?
Vote.
Yeah.
I don't think everybody's mind's getting changed, or whatever it's.
Well, does anyone have a motion?
I don't have a motion, I, I need a motion.
I, I would move that we do not.
You have to do it in the pause.
So do any of. Prefer somebody to, somebody to make the motion to accept a, a marijuana.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Well, the motion would be to recommend denial.
I'll make the motion to accept it, and that doesn't mean that that's what I'm voting for, I'll make.
Well, I'll, I'll do it, because I'm the one who wants it, I mean, it, the, I, I, I make a motion to recommend to the city council their proposed moratorium on recreational marijuana zoning, 'cause that's what it is, it's the, it's, it's just drafting the zoning, um, with two conditions, one, they, they review their definition of recreational marijuana establishment, because I think they need to put in non-medical in there somewhere, but, um, and number two, that the city still, the city should take an active role in, in, uh, establishing and drafting an ordinance,
Prior to the release of the state.
For the rec- for recreational marijuana, for the establishment of the city ordinance.
Uh, in parallel, they put it in parallel with, in parallel with the state, uh, plan.
Yes.
So that, with that, with that being the motion, if this does not pass, if we, if we do not recommend this.
It has.
And you can do whatever you want.
So you make another motion to still add those two conditions in.
Just to the conditions.
True.
'Cause I think those are important one way or the other, I think those are important.
Well, we're recommending.
I do too, but we're just making a recommendation to the city council.
Do I have a second today?
Well, I, let me start, if that isn't, if that doesn't pass.
That's the right. Right.
If that doesn't pass, then you have to give, I think, well, just give, give them the reason why it hasn't passed, and then say.
Yeah, it's a recommendation.
But look at, but if the city council's still going to proceed with the moratorium, review the definitions, and still, and still, and let's, in, in conjunction with the moratorium, let's, um,
Proceed, you know.
Proceed with the, with the creation of the ordinance.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. Let's vote.
Let's vote.
So, that's my motion, we hear.
I have a motion.
I second the motion.
Well, the motion is to.
'Cause I don't want to vote no anymore.
The motion is to recommend, to proceed with the moratorium, and with the condition that the state, check what my memory is, that the, that the city continue in parallel with the state, uh, to develop a plan, okay? An, a new ordinance, for medical marijuana. And that the definition, uh, on the moratorium, uh, be corrected.
At least continue operation.
Correct it to, you know.
Can I, uh, add an amendment? Can we get something in there around a timeline for the moratorium, that's what I, you know, that's, uh, what bothers me.
Well, it's July first, two thousand eighteen, you have that one in there.
Yeah.
Well.
All right, let's move.
I have a motion, I have a second, a second?
Yeah, a second.
Motion made a second, all in favor say aye.
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 I get two? All opposed say no.
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 I get three?
Four.
Four.
Yeah, four.
Okay, motion is defeated.
So, no, we recommend it, yeah.
So now.
Okay, a new motion would be to.
You don't need a new motion, it's defeated, then we're just asking, we're asking.
Compare the reasons.
Chris, uh, Kristen to, to tell him no, but say if, I mean, it's just a recommendation, just, then just say.
Yeah, exactly.
If, if it's still going to pass, if you're still going to pass it, re, relook at the definition that you have listed, and let's still.
And let's get moving on.
Well, we don't think that's a claim of a motion.
Yeah, no, you, go back to six point three, we'll do it now, so.
No, it's already in.
Okay, six point three.
I, I move six point three off the table.
That's a good idea, Paul.
I have a motion to move six point three off the table.
Second.
Motion made a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries.
So I would recommend that if we pass this, we attach those same conditions. Uh, this suggests that we add a new section for recreational marijuana and begin starting some zone ordinances. The zoning ordinance should include the same things that Carol said, probably.
Second.
A broader definition than what was included in the moratorium.
So you're recommending approval to this?
I'm recommending approval, so I have to do a positive motion, right?
Well, we prefer a positive.
It makes it cleaner.
So, yeah, so I'm recommending approval in my motion with the same conditions attached.
Yeah, I like it. Clean way of doing it.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, pass. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say no.
I can, I can go yes for both. I'm not contradicting myself.
You were right there, not mutually.
No, no, this is, this is.
No, this is just sale, it's been forward, figuring this thing out, you know?
All right, summer planning.
Okay, communication, summer planning, board meeting schedule. We already know it's gonna be July sixteen.
Seventeenth.
Uh, seventeen?
Seventeenth, so it's the August, I mean, we would be.
August seventeenth?
I'm sorry, so for July?
Yeah, the seventeen.
July seventeenth?
Yep.
Okay.
And for August?
For August, the first Monday in August is the seventh.
No, we, we wanted to go to the second, Carol, you still doing your, uh, do, do the third, third Monday?
First and third, so that's what we're deciding.
It'd be just the third.
We always do the third, it's on the schedule.
We do once.
Right, so you're deciding which one in August you want to have.
Yeah, but you don't want it too close to the one in July, in case we have to schedule something, so what's sort of the.
So that's right.
Twenty first?
Thirty, twenty first.
Twenty first, yeah.
Twenty first.
Twenty first, do the twenty first.
So moved.
All right.
Okay.
I don't think you need a motion.
No, that's a motion that I require.
Now the fun part, shared driveways.
Shared driveways.
Jeez, wow, this is like the flavor of a month. Shared driveways?
So.
Since when do we?
So is there more information?
Well.
Should I give up?
Why don't you give us an option?
Okay, John and I attended the May twenty-second city council meeting to talk about shared driveways. Our, um, we initiated the petition to make it, change the wording so they are not permitted at all. We brought it forward, and they offered some other options, you know, would, would we be interested in, um, maybe buy a special permit or have a separate ordinance governing shared driveways? We came back here for a recommendation, and we discussed that, and still recommended no, we want them to be not permitted, and that went back. So then John and I went to the meeting on the twenty-second, talked about it some more, um, they are still, they're, the city council is still concerned that by removing it entirely, it, you're really closing avenues that you may want to.
No pun intended.
Uh, that you may wanna consider in certain cases, 'cause you know, it's just a complete, it's a blanket, uh, denial. So, again, the idea of possibly having to buy a special permit. Um, I did receive, and we put in your packets, some bylaws from other towns that were brought forth, um, by some of the council members to consider if we wanted to put an ordinance in place. Here's some language, you know, that we might, that might be, um, of interest. And then, um, Congressman Badanza had done a draft ordinance as well, and that was in there. I'm, I'm not sure where he was pulling his information from, but a variety of sources, and this was something that he put together. Somebody would like, um, the board to consider.
Just to get, give you an idea, this is one from Badanza here. We go to hey, they got a whole section on shared driveways, and all we, and, and, and that's what I'm afraid of. We go from ultra easy, just, we don't do it, to a section that is overly, I think, ridiculous on, because shared driveways cause, as I read this, cause so many problems that they write a one, two, three.
You need a complete ordinance to deal with it.
A three-page ordinance to make it legal.
And that's the shortest of the examples.
That's the, yeah, okay, this one is even longer, okay? So it's just, so it's a totally confusing, and that was the problem. It was totally arched, confusing, and it didn't work. And, I mean, one of these, I forgot, I was reading it, they actually wanna put some town, a shed at the end of the driveway. Okay, so you got a place to put your trash, and that's one of the problems, where do I put my trash? Oh, you're on my property, no, you're on my property, okay? It's just, it doesn't make sense. And in order to work it out, you have to come up with this document where we can just take it out. And, and really, it doesn't, doesn't buy anything, now, the, the, if we wanna try to come up with something simpler and say, hey, we wanna refer it to the special permit, maybe, okay? But that's, that brings up, again, another whole issue, because most of our problem is, some of it we've addressed, because shared driveways traditionally is what we had, where people had some backland. They had no frontage on a road. So they, in order to create frontage, they put a, a road up, and let's call it an upside-down funnel, for the sake of the thing, and you funnel it out when you got to the road, so that you had, you need eighty feet, so you got eighty feet on this side, and eighty feet on that side, and then the road that goes up. But oh, by the way, behind that eighty feet right here is a house that's on the road. So he actually had property that, in front of a house on a road, that wasn't owned by the people that lived in the house that's on the road. If you can picture that, and we actually have.
That's my house.
That, that's the choice, that's the situations that we have.
Why not sure that we're supposed to take it, just.
But people do it. I, I.
This is under communication.
I think it just for us to think about.
Mull it over.
Okay.
Yeah, so go home and think about it.
I don't know, I, you know, we've made our recommendation to take it out.
We've already, yeah, we initiated a petition.
So do we make a motion to reiterate our position, reaffirm our position?
I don't think we take any action at all.
Let me, I agree. All right, next.
Yeah.
Let them, let them propose, let them come up with the ordinance.
Right, and then, and then throw it at us and let us look at it.
Like, could come up with a. I mean.
We've made our recommendation.
Anyone can make a petition to, to, anyone can make a, a petition to amend the ordinance, right, to include something.
And we made a petition, we're to take it out.
I think they're looking for us to do that.
Yeah, this was, this was informal, they were handed the documents, there's, there's no request, you know, formal request from the clerk's office or anything for us to do anything, they said.
Okay.
Directors report?
Well.
Yeah, uh, we're not in hearing, but I'll let you.
I, I want to hear what Gail has to say.
But right now, shared driveways are allowed, so if nothing happens, then it keeps going forward.
That's right.
You know, for them.
Yeah, we've made the recommendation to take it out.
Well, but usually, but we have that ordinance in effect about the frontage, so sometimes those shared driveways don't work because they don't comply with that, the, the pork chop lot that we excluded.
I'm just curious what situations the city council is trying to allow, given that for many years there weren't shared, shared walk driveways, and it didn't seem to be a problem.
No, there, there were shared driveways.
You know, you know, well, for instance, the example is.
But then there weren't.
We went back to the zoning laws, and they seem to have always been allowed.
I mean, you know, Pleasant and Low.
Yeah.
It's a shared driveway, and they built condos in there 'cause of the, uh, you know, 'cause of the zone. So that was probably one of the things that, that blew this up, or touched it off.
Well, what touched it off was the, the ones they built for Pleasant Street.
That's what I just said.
Yeah, and, and.
Yeah, 'cause you can't have that frontage, we can't.
All right, directors report?
We, we fight over other statistics.
That's the question, rhetorically.
No, that's, that's, that's Kristen.
We're not gonna do anything.
No, and I, I, I can let the clerk's office know, you know, I don't know what they want us to do with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There's no official request for.
No official request.
Okay.
Do we have, we don't have a director's report? Nope.
Your motion do it.
I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries.